Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 23rd, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Good evening. We have a full agenda this evening. Just a few quick announcements. If you happen to have your cellphone, if you wouldn't mind turning that on vibrate or silent, and if you could take any important calls you have out in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. Emergency exits for anyone who hasn't been here before are out the door to your right and then to the right around the corner and down the stairs. This evening, we have Reverend Sean McCarthy with us, who's the Lead Minister at Community Christian Church, to lead us in our city invocation. Reverend?
Thank you. It's an honor to come be invited to pray with you and for you tonight. So if you would, would you join me as we pray? Father, we're just grateful to be here tonight, and God, we're grateful for this city you've given us. Lord, I pray for these leaders. I pray, Lord, that you would bless them and empower them to lead and continue to be with them as they're in their meeting tonight. I pray, Father, that you would continue to give them wisdom and direction and understanding as they make decisions that will affect us, Father. May the people of Salisbury be led by them as they are led by you. Lord, we are grateful, and we invite you to be here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have two presentations this evening, and I'd like to start with one. I'm going to ask you for your patience for one second. It's been a tough week for all of Salisbury for a number of reasons. You know, the snowstorms that we faced. Mr. Spees isn't with us this evening because he has some flooding at his house. The cold has certainly taken its toll on us. But personally, here and for one of our council members, we're grieving Ms. Mary Black Pinkett passed away. She served as the second African-American female council member on the Salisbury City Council from 1991 to 1994 and was the cousin of Councilwoman Shaney Shields. And Shaney, you and your family have been in our prayers.
Thank you.
And I would like to invite everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, and after that, the mayor has some comments that he'd like to make.
Good evening, Mr. Council President. Salisbury lost one of its most incredible residents in Mary Black Pinkett, who you did say served on the Salisbury City Council from April the 22nd, 1991 until May 16th, 1994. She was appointed to fulfill the remaining term of District One Councilwoman Gertrude Shockley, who passed away on March 24th, 1991. Mary celebrated her 100th birthday in 2013, and many of you were on hand when we renamed Pearl Street over Fitzwater Street, Mary Pinkett Way. Just as, one of the things, I'll be honest with you, one of the things that former Council President Louise Smith taught me is that we should not forget our history, and as you know, she delivered all of her memoirs and notes and books to the NAB Center. So over this past week, as we've all been kind of wrapping our arms around Shaney, I did a little bit of digging, and so did the city clerk, and I just want to be able to share with the members of the public here and, of course, those watching on PAC-14, because saying it out loud and having it on record sometimes, I think, is a tribute, the right tribute. But Mary Black Pinkett was born on August 3rd, 1913, to David and Tina Black of Morris Street in Fruitland. She was one of five children. She was married to the late Preston Pinkett Sr. and is the mother of Preston and Maurice. She began her formal education at the Morris Street Colored Elementary School in Fruitland and graduated in 1930 from the Salisbury Industrial School. She obtained her teaching certificate from Bowie State Normal School, now Bowie State University. She attended Morgan State in Baltimore for two years and pursued continuing education classes at what was then SSC, Salisbury State College. She taught in Wycomico County Schools for more than 40 years and was a mentor and a teacher on Saturdays at the Fruitland Community Center. She was a member of the Mount Calvary United Methodist Church in Fruitland since birth and was active well into the 1980s as an adult Sunday School teacher and mentor of United Methodist Women. When we take a look at those years on the Salisbury City Council, she was flanked by people like Bob Gladin. She was flanked by Tim Stakemore. She was flanked by Robin Cockey. And so very, very interesting things were found for us today, and one of them, a very big testament to why we are here this evening. But Mary was one of the people who voted for the elimination of non-resident voting. She was one of the people who voted to start the Mitchell Landing Project here in town. She was one of the people who voted to start the partnership with the Art Institute and Gallery. She was one of the people who voted for the beginnings of the Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development Group and the arrival of Dave Ryan that year. She was one of the people who voted to name the plaza "The Plaza," which in Salisbury, something that simple over the years may not have always been the easiest thing in the world for us to accomplish. She also was on the city council when we voted to create the first arts and entertainment district in downtown. So the idea that many of you are here to speak about that this evening is certainly a testament to her. Now, Mary was stern as a teacher. She was serious. She understood that community service and education go hand in hand. She had an opinion, much like her cousin Ms. Shields. And we know this, that when the newspapers came calling 100 years after the last lynching in the state of Maryland, which happened here, it was Mary Pinkett who took the opposite tact of anyone who was interviewed and said, "We should let those things rest." Where everyone else said, "No, we should not." It was very interesting to read about her work there with Gladys Jones and with the Ivy AKA Academy in Fruitland. There was another famous Mary Pinkett that served in our country. Mary Pinkett from New York City was the first African-American woman to serve on the New York City Council, and she served from 1974 to 2001. Pretty amazing. But for those of us who attended school here, we know that Gladys and Mary were the precursors to many African-American teachers that we have had throughout the years, that have been our teachers, that have been our principals, that have worked in the school system. And let me, just Shaney, for your benefit, mention some of those names that Mary Pinkett forged a path for. They were names like Rainwright and Jackson and Butler and Johns and Wright and Jones and Gibson and Giddens and Bailey and Mitchell and Savoy and Gosley and Lee and Purnell and Hicks. Those are the people that are truly the legacy that Mary Pinkett leaves behind for us. So I say to you tonight, Shaney, on behalf of all of us in the school system, on behalf of all of the schoolchildren that she taught, on behalf of our city and its residents, we send our prayers up for you, and we envelop you in our common love of Salisbury and in the service of elected officials, and we ask that the good Lord watch over you and your family in this time. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving along with our agenda, I'd like to invite another guest for our community organization presentation this evening. Ms. Suzanne Murray is here with us from the Blood Bank of Delmarva. Suzanne, would you come forward? Thank you.
Can I just speak like this?
Unfortunately, we need you at the microphone. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Murray, and I'm with the Blood Bank of Delmarva. How many people in this room are active blood donors? Raise your hand. Oh, that's a... Oh, look at all the people that aren't. Okay, that's why I'm here. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Blood Bank, we are the Blood Bank here on the Delmarva Peninsula that services 17 hospitals that are on the eastern shore of Maryland and the state of Delaware. PRMC is our second biggest user of blood next to Christiana Care. Every day to meet the needs of these hospitals, we need to schedule 350 people to donate blood across the peninsula. That's how big the need is. And every day that goes on, our blood donor population is aging, and in most cases, although they would like to donate for various medical reasons, they're no longer able to. So it's important that we get new donors to step up and take their place if we are to keep up the challenge of getting our 350 donors every day. For those of you that have never donated, here in Salisbury, we have a very nice center up on Mount Herman Road near Baglin Park Drive. We try to make the donation process easy and pleasant, even though we use a needle. If we could do it without the needle, we'd get a lot more people to donate. But for those people that do try it for the first time, and I work with a lot of students at high schools and local colleges, most of 99.9% of them will say, "That was really easy. I could do that again." Like I said, if the process was really that awful, we wouldn't have people who donate once a year, twice a year, and even five times a year. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Plus, you get a lot of good cookies. But the most important thing is why we need this blood. And I have a story that just really sticks in my heart. I mean, everybody is familiar with the accident victims, maybe complications due to surgery, you know, like heart surgery or any kind of surgery in accidents. But there's another side. A lot of our blood goes to cancer patients. There's a little boy up in Delaware that aged three months, was diagnosed with the rare blood disease, and his body just stopped making blood. At that point, he required regular transfusions. Now he is eight years old. He looks like any other healthy young little boy. He runs, he plays, he goes to school, and every blood cell in his body comes from somebody else. He goes in monthly for transfusions to keep his blood up to where it has to be. And without people going in and donating blood just out of the kindness of their hearts, he would not be with us today. So please, think about doing it. If you're just a little afraid of needles, maybe you can overcome that fear and come out and just try it. You might be pleasantly surprised. If you own a business or you work with a large group of people, maybe you could invite me in to do a presentation, talk, and encourage people to become a blood donor and actually sign them up or schedule appointments for them. We do depend on our local business leaders and government leaders to help us recruit new donors into the Blood Bank so that we can keep, you know, keep rotating people through, so to speak, so that the burden of donating blood just doesn't fall on a few, but we spread it out among many. So I thank you for your time today. I hope some of you might consider signing up. I've left some brochures up at the desk. It has some additional information about our Blood Bank, and it's got a toll-free number and a website on the back that you can call to schedule your first appointment. So the Salisbury office is open five days a week. We have different hours every day to accommodate everybody's busy work schedule, so there's no need to worry about that. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope to see some of you there.
Ms. Murray, can you, for the benefit of anyone watching on PAC-14, give your address of your Salisbury office and that toll-free number?
Okay, the Salisbury office is 1309 Mount Herman Road. We're right across the street from the new Rite Aid that is on the corner. And our phone number is 1-888-8-BLOOD-8, which I know I don't like spelling out numbers, you know, on the phone, but it is an easy way to remember it. So that's 1-888-8-BLOOD-8. And we have schedulers there, you know, five days a week to take your appointments. And you can also schedule online at delmarvablood.org. And you can just go on there, and there's a listing for scheduling your appointment, and it will show you where we are, what our hours are, and it's very easy to do.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions from council?
I have one question.
Yes.
Tattoos.
Yes.
I have to, because I always preach to especially my grandkids, these young people are getting tattoos. Could you explain if you have a tattoo or multiple tattoos on your body?
And I face that a lot in the high schools, believe it or not. Tattoos are fine, as long as it's been a year or more since you had it done. The FDA doesn't monitor tattoo parlors in the state of Maryland, so we don't know under what conditions that you got the tattoos. So if for some reason you were to contract a disease, you would know within a year's time. After a year, it's fine. You could be covered with tattoos. We don't care. Same thing with body piercings, anything other than the ear lobe that you might get done at Claire's or the piercing pagoda. We want you to wait a year after having it done. But after that, we're okay with it. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Excellent.
Thank you.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend the agenda by moving the public hearing resolution number 2480, authorizing an application to the Maryland State Arts Council of the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development to expand the boundaries of the existing arts and entertainment district to immediately following the consent agenda in order that we may comply with the advertised public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All right. An amendment, a second.
And I would all...
Go ahead.
And I would also like to amend the agenda to remove the Stormwater Ordinance Number 2315 from the agenda.
Okay.
Can we do those two separate?
Yep. All right. First, that's all right. The first item, moving Resolution 2480 to immediately after the consent agenda. I have a second on that. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I apologize.
No, no, it's fine. And the second, is there a second for removing ordinance number 2315?
I'll say second, just for discussion.
Discussion. Mr. Stevenson, can you explain that?
Public work is requested to be removed from the agenda this evening, that's all.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that item? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, chair votes aye. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the legislative agenda as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Evening.
We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the January 12th, 2015 closed session minutes, the February 2nd work session minutes, and the February 9th regular meeting minutes. And that would conclude the consent agenda.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments, anything on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2480. This is the expansion of the arts and entertainment district. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2480.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. This is also a public hearing, so we'll start with the presentation of the resolution. We'll follow that with any questions or comments from council, and then we'll go to the public hearing. Mr. Stevenson?
Good evening, and thank you. For the purpose of background, I'll provide the following. The Arts and Entertainment District Steering Committee expressed interest in expanding the boundaries of the Arts and Entertainment District in Salisbury. The existing Arts and Entertainment District covers approximately 72.24 acres of land in the city. The proposed changes to the boundaries would include addition of Rivers Edge Apartments and Studio for Arts, the City of Salisbury Marina, the Korean Presbyterian Church, Faith Community Church, and property owned by Wycomico Presbyterian Church. The expansion, proposed expansion will increase the Arts and Entertainment District boundaries by 12.92 acres.
Questions for Mr. Stevenson, comments? All right, hearing none. We'll go right into the public hearing. First, I will say that according to council rules, you know, everyone may comment. If you have a comment that is similar to a comment made before you, I will accept ditto as a comment. And, but that said, we want to make sure everyone is given an opportunity to speak, and so we'll call you up by name if you submitted a form. And if you still wish to comment and you haven't submitted a form to speak, feel free to come forward. But what we'll need to do first is to swear you in. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Nichols?
Okay. Everyone wishing to speak, if you would stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, I apologize. So first up, we have Mr. Wigley.
Good evening, President, Council. Thank you very much for having us here. I'm Mike Wigley. I'm the Treasurer of the Arts and Entertainment District Committee, and I'm also an architect and president of Davis, Bone &amp; Fidel. We're a business located right here in the Arts and Entertainment District as well. We employ about 40 people downtown, and certainly, our staff enjoys the benefits of vibrant downtown, and we think that this expansion of the district helps in that regard. So thank you for hearing us. I know there's a lot of people here that are actually going to speak in favor, and of course, Mr. Stevenson spoke about some of the details, so I'm not going to go into necessarily a whole lot of detail. I am here available to answer any questions that you may have, and also Lee Whaley and Connie Stroud, who are co-chair of the committee, are also here to answer questions, too. First of all, let me mention that I've been around for about 30 years downtown and have been involved in many different revitalization efforts downtown. I got here just after RUDAT, so I wasn't part of that, but several since then. And I've got to say that the Arts and Entertainment District Committee is probably one of the most dynamic, one of the most goal-oriented groups that I've had the privilege of working with. And I've got to say, too, that the downtown itself is probably at one of its most dynamic points that I've experienced as well, and it looks like it's on the upswing. Very happy and encouraged to see that, and any part of that movement that I can offer, that we as a committee can offer, you know, we certainly want to be able to do that. And so thank you again for hearing us. Just a little bit about the District Committee. We formally began in 2007. We're not an arts organization, per se. We're really more of an economic development group. Our role is to promote and enhance and sponsor art and entertainment activities downtown, try to make the downtown area a more vibrant place in that regard. I think there's going to be people speaking after me that will talk more eloquently about, you know, the things that are happening downtown now and some of the things that are going to be happening in the future. So, you know, we are very interested in seeing the area expand. Currently, the designated area for the art and entertainment district is 72 acres. We're looking to expand that by 13 acres, as Mr. Stevenson described. And the map is behind me here. We're cleaning up several properties. The original district boundary is cut across property lines, and so part of what we're doing with this expansion is cleaning that up, including the entire parcels, so that we don't have problems down the road. But there are a few major components of the expansion. One is the River Edge Apartments and Studio planned across Mill Street. Right now, the district goes to Brew River. This would then expand to include the apartments and also the Salisbury Port, the Marina there. The Rivers Edge is an income-restricted residential complex. As we understand, they're currently processing about 55 applications that are qualified artists coming in. As I understand it, there are 25 artists that currently live within the district. I know Third Friday, there's 450-some on the contact list, 65 musical groups, so there is very much an interest in working and creating art and providing entertainment downtown. So we're looking to expand by 13. The Rivers Edge, that particular project, is proposing a 2,500-square-foot studio and gallery space available to the public, outside sculpture areas for local artists, which the intent apparently is to commission, which is good to see. Like I said, the Salisbury Marina would be included. One of the things that happens when we bring these properties onboard is outdoor spaces become available for events and activities as well. And we can see that happening in conjunction with the Marina in between Brew River, the Rivers Edge, and also Chesapeake East is located across the street, so we think there could be some dynamic relationship with activities over there. Also, some of the major inclusions in the expansion are north of Route 50, if you consider the Chipman Center, the businesses along Broad Street, which are currently in the district. But what we're looking to embrace are three churches, Faith Community, Korean Presbyterian, and Wycomico Presbyterian Church properties. All of those are active, and they do have the venues to offer, you know, their fellowship halls, also areas for musical performances, which happen regularly, as I understand. Also, their outdoor areas can be used for venues, and they are on occasion. And so we're looking to bring those in as part of the district. So, you know, the benefits of arts and entertainment, like I say, others will get into it a little bit, obviously a catalyst for activity. We're looking to inject downtown with, you know, more dynamic, creative-type of events. Merchants, visitors, business owners alike participate in that. There are currently 13 restaurants and bars downtown. Obviously, the Art Institute and Galleries there, W O R K, Salisbury University Gallery, Chesapeake East, Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council. Headquarters Live has recently opened and proposed coming soon as a Salisbury Dance Academy and Eastern Shore Ballet into the old First National Building. We're also finding that these groups and businesses embrace the idea of being associated with the Arts and Entertainment District. We've got a very good marketing, you know, with the efforts of James Peter and Third Friday, the, you know, marketing value of being associated with the Arts and Entertainment District, we're finding is being advantageous, advertising, social media, cross-promotion. We're seeing some energy there. So we believe the benefits are numerable. The request, we think, will be both beneficial and manageable. We ask for your support, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions at this time for Mr. Wigley. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to invite Susan Purnell.
I really should say ditto.
You don't have to.
But, since I prepared some.
Yes, please.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Susan Purnell. I have Kune's Jewelers downtown, and my family's been a part of downtown since 1923. If any of you have ever traveled to a town that you just loved, I bet it was because of their downtown. In fact, I've never heard anyone say, "I love that town because there's strip malls. They're great." You don't say that. Downtowns are the heart of a city. There have been so many studies of downtown, as Mike has mentioned, products of many of the downtown associations that I've been a part of over the years. They've all concluded the same thing. Our downtown needs to be accessible, visible, and a mixture of restaurants, retail, and housing in order to thrive. We are finally seeing this happen. I remember Dad saying one Friday night that we were open, "Gosh, I could go out on the plaza and I could throw a bowling ball, and I wouldn't hit a soul." Well, if he came to a Third Friday event, he would maim many a person, because it's a mob scene on Third Friday, and it's beautiful to me as a store owner and as a member of downtown. Events like Third Friday, Arts on the Plaza, and New Year's Eve have brought downtown Salisbury to life. And most importantly, I think they have sparked entrepreneurial ship, like the Headquarters Live, a place like no other urban setting. And because, you can look at live music in a cool urban setting, and because of that, you can go to a restaurant now and eat sushi or southern comfort food or tapas or hamburger, all within walking distance of a concert, or you can just have a glass of wine over at the Brick Room. It's pretty exciting. Now, we're going to have almost 100 new beds in the new Rivers Edge, occupied by artists who can bring their talents to downtown. Why not expand the Arts and Entertainment District to include them and allow them to expose us to their creativity? The more inclusive we are, the more talent we allow to surround us, and the more energized our city becomes. It's happened in Easton, it's happened in Berlin, which are much smaller towns than we are. There is no reason in the world why it can't happen here. Thank you.
Glad you didn't say ditto. Right. I'd like to... I'd like to invite Derek Weaver to come forward.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Derek Weaver. I'm a part of several different organizations that are downtown. First, Remedy Church, which is located in the city center, where a church that meets downtown. We love downtown. I'm also a pastor there. I also live downtown, I work downtown. I'm also the president of the Board of AING and I've worked very closely with the Arts and Entertainment District as I've been downtown. Very quickly, in moving here, I, unlike Susan, haven't been here for my whole life. I relocated here about five years ago. Very quickly, after we planted Remedy Church, we were in the movie theater on the other side of town and noticed the void between that area and noticing that people weren't coming that way and we didn't know why. And then we saw the way downtown was flourishing, decided to come join. Very quickly, I guess within months, we met Jamie Heater, saw what Third Friday was doing. That was even before I met Connie or Lee and saw the beautiful things they were doing, but started getting involved with Third Friday through Remedy Church. Also, a part of a nonprofit called We Are SBY that I run. We also have helped with the Arts and Entertainment District through the Salisbury Festival, which I know we can all cry for a moment, more than that if we need to, but I would like to say on behalf of them, I know through the Arts and Entertainment District, we're going to see more beautiful things come from what they're doing that are going to be bigger and better than the Salisbury Festival has probably ever been. And I know I haven't been here very long and I haven't seen everything that's happened here, but I have seen the way Third Friday has grown. When we first started helping, there were probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty people coming downtown and now there's thousands, way too many. I actually set up a table and sell T-shirts for We Are SBY every month at Third Friday and it's innumerable the amount of T-shirts I sell just through what Jamie's done with the A and E District. And I've also worked closely with Andrew Hansen and the River's Edge Apartments and they are great people and I believe that they definitely need to be added to this. I don't know personally any of the other organizations we see on this list, but I do know them and we've been in works with them. They've helped with the downtown egg hunt that we have every year. And actually, this year, they're gold sponsors for us, so they gave us a lot of money to help with the egg hunt this year. So I know that they should be included because they're doing beautiful things for the artists and nonprofits and so on and so forth. And I would like to give my support in all of this through A and E and the amazing things Connie and Lee and Jamie and everyone else on that board has done. It's beautiful stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. I'd like to invite Susan Pat forward.
Hello, thank you for having us. I am Susan Pat and I own Cake Art, which is directly across the street from here. We have a small cupcake cafe and we do specialty cakes and wedding cakes. I've been here for five years. I started my business just about five years ago downtown when not much was going on downtown. And people looked at me and said, "Are you sure about that location?" And I said, "Well, thankfully, a destination location is all I need." So people came specifically to us to get what we have to offer. Wow, we've come a long way in five years, I can say. Started out with getting involved with the Third Friday, thanks to Connie and Lee, and that was in the, pretty much the beginning. It'd been going on a few years maybe at that point, so I started getting involved in that and saw the value in staying open late. People got to know us. People that didn't come down any other time downtown because of assorted reasons, they were like, "Wow, we didn't know you were here." So they got to discover so much that was going on downtown that they had no idea. More and more businesses, now I have the gallery right next door, which they do late evening things, they do things during the day, brings people in that also did not know about my business being there. So as it's expanding further and further, I can see only good things coming out of it. More and more people are coming down, people are frequenting the downtown. When you come down, you want to go out to eat, let's go downtown and we'll go here for appetizers, here for drinks, here for dinner. Can spend a whole evening entertaining. We have everything, or some of everything right now. Hopefully, we'll get some more. So I think the expansion is a no-brainer. I think it's like, more space, let's expand, let's bring more people downtown, let's get the economy boosted. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I'd like to invite Andrea Gentry to come forward.
I am Andrea Gentry Seidel and I'm the Executive Director at the AING. And Ms. Shields, first of all, our heart is with you because Mary Pinkett was part of our legacy. We are now sixty-two years old and we are a cornerstone partner with the happenings of the downtown. A and E has done miraculous things, different organizations. Every organization participates to make this successful. For the AING and the eight years that I've been there, I have watched different openings, where we would have forty, fifty, maybe sixty people, and sixty was good. We now average over two-hundred-and-fifty at an opening. This is because of Third Friday, this is because of A and E. So I thank you for supporting this and I thank all of the partners who have made this successful. They have shown exactly what can do when a few minds get together and they have enough passion and caring behind them to make everything work. So I thank you for that, I thank you from the AING and I thank you for creating a wonderful downtown that we can visit.
Excellent. Thank you. Susan Holt.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Susan Holt, I'm the Gallery Director and Instructor at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. For fifteen years, I've lived in downtown in Salisbury and during this time, I've been active in many different revitalization efforts, specifically in public art projects. Currently, I'm Chair of the Public Arts Subcommittee of the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District Committee. I'm honored to address the City Council and to speak about the importance of supporting the expansion. Over the years, I've been so fortunate to have been a part of several collaborative art projects, such as a series of metal sculptures along Route Thirteen and Carroll Street, designed by SU art students, executed by Parkside High School vocational students, with materials and expertise and technical assistance, all donated by local businesses. Arts on the Plaza during the Salisbury Festival with the Memories of Downtown, interactive installation where elderly residents shared their rich stories of Salisbury's past. Last year's Arts on the Plaza where a group of UMS arts, excuse me, art students made a collective mural portrait of Nelson Mandela. Recently, students did the first of a series of wheat paste murals on the Powell Building. And we have one electric utility box that's been painted with colorful scenes of the arts in Salisbury and plans are in the works for another fifteen to be painted by local artists and students. These projects, I believe, bring out the best in our community, uniting enthusiastic volunteers from the ranks of high school and college students, local businesses and artists, and supported by the city and state governments. It's well documented all over the country that the arts are a catalyst for revitalization. We know how lively, how a lively art scene in a community will draw people, new businesses, investment, and growth. But apart from all the good, sound, well-documented economic reasons, there's another very important reason for the city of Salisbury to give full support to expanding the boundaries of the Arts and Entertainment District and continuing support for the arts in general. With the successes of several new initiatives spearheaded by different groups, Third Friday, First Saturday, coming soon, Headquarters Live, et cetera, it's clearly evident that this city and especially our young people are ripe for opportunities to create culture and a new collective identity. They want to be part of a growing sense of community, founded on diversity and open to the future. Please help make that happen by supporting the expansion of the A and E District. The arts enrich all of us. I'd like to end with a few quotes. Picasso said, "The purpose of art is washing the dust of daily life off our souls." When Winston Churchill was asked to cut arts funding in favor of the war effort, he simply replied, "Then what are we fighting for?" Albert Einstein said, "Logic will take you from A to B. Imagination will take you everywhere." The former mayor of Baton Rouge said, "The arts are the best insurance policy a city can take on itself." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'd like to invite Ernie Colburn forward.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ernie Colburn, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our, as of today, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-member-strong Chamber of Commerce and as the parent of the Arts and Entertainment Committee, we are so proud and pleased to be able to ask you to continue to expand with smart growth this area that we refer to as the Arts and Entertainment District. I understand without any question the concerns that everyone had with regard to the Salisbury Festival. Let me just say this very briefly. The decision to discontinue doing that was not taken lightly, it was over a matter of a couple of years, quite frankly. However, with the growth of Third Friday and with First Saturday coming on, in effect, you're getting two mini Salisbury festivals every month, starting in six months, April through October. And then in October, the first weekend in October, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce will do a very high-class arts and culturally-oriented program called Torches: Fire on the Water, which will be on the Riverwalk. And if any of you've ever been up to Providence, Rhode Island, and been familiar with that, it will be similar, not a mock or duplicate, but similar. And we were very pleased with the opportunity to have that event starting in October. We have to get permission, but we will hopefully get those various permissions to do that. I want to thank Connie Stroud, I want to thank Lee Whaley, and also Jamie Heater. The work that they've done, just phenomenal. As I said, this is smart growth and opening this up to additional areas enhances the cultural aspects of our community. And this is part of building that lifestyle that is so critical to our economic balance. And with that lifestyle growth and bringing in pieces like this, with this aspect of our community, you bring in that talent, you keep that talent there, or the human capital as it's referred to. So this is a basic fabric of our community that is so essential that we follow through on and we do it with so much pride and dignity and quality of product and work. So thank you and thank you, Council and Mr. Mayor, for your continued support.
Thank you, Ernie. I'd like to invite Wesley Cox.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, President, and Council members. I knew you had a full agenda tonight, I ditto Ernie's comments, and this is my first official prepared statement ever, to keep it short. So, just to introduce myself, my name is Wesley Cox, I'm a Senior Advisor with Sperry Van Ness Commercial Real Estate. Here in downtown Salisbury, our offices have been located in downtown for seven years, I think, so far. Time's flying by. I'm also the Secretary of the Executive Board of Directors at the Coastal Association of Realtors. One of my roles as a professional is to help attract new businesses and help expand existing businesses. And I can tell you, having a vibrant, having a vibrant downtown and arts and entertainment district definitely helps with those efforts. We get asked that question all the time, "How's your downtown events and population and efforts going?" And it absolutely helps. Between all the events, between all the private and public partnerships and redevelopment and the upcoming capital improvements to the downtown streetscape and infrastructure, the progress I've seen is nothing short of amazing over the last few years and we need to continue that progress moving forward. As we know, the Arts and Entertainment Districts throughout Maryland, they help, excuse me, they help develop and promote community involvement, tourism, and revitalization. The proposed expansion of this district, it is targeted for a few specific needs and it will definitely give the district room to grow. As the progress continues, two of those key needs are affordable places to live and work, as we've seen with the River's Edge Apartments, in addition to having additional performance spaces. The proposed expansion addresses both those needs, as I just mentioned, with the River's Edge Apartments. In addition to the performance spaces on the northern end of the district, where places such as the Chipman Cultural Center and nearby churches, they do have a history of venues for supporting those musical performances and the arts. In addition to some of the benefits that we've heard here tonight, a few others that I would just like to point out is it gives us, it gives us new partners to help attract residents and increase tourism in the district, which can, again, bring more positive economic development to the downtown area. It adds needed performance and meeting space for the Arts and Organization Districts that I just pointed out. It also adds affordable places to live, as a recap. And the most important benefit that I see as a young professional that attended Salisbury University and have decided to stay here in the community after receiving offers to go into other communities, larger cities around us, it'll help retain young professionals in our city. Young professionals today, as when I graduated colleges, they seek a place with a strong sense of community. We're doing a great job developing that, the Arts and Entertainment Committee, Connie and Jamie and Lee, the rest of them, we need to continue that progress, not halt it, and we look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Not bad for a first time. I'd like to invite Nancy Alt House forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and members. I'm Nancy Alt House, I'm an elder at Wycomico Presbyterian Church and I am here to draw your attention to new space that is available to the arts and entertainment. And that is the Gray Granite Building and we have a poster here, in case you don't recall, on North Division Street. Its history started with Asbury Church and then when Asbury moved out to Camden, Allen Memorial purchased it and then Wycomico Presbyterian purchased it. Inside, on the bottom left there, you will see a large stage area that is available for performances and then the hall itself will hold two-hundred people. So that's all new space that is very different from what is available now and we feel that it will meet a need within the community and certainly within easy-walking distance from downtown, which Dr. Carey can attest to, how easy it is to watch, walk from Newtown to PRMC. But the, we are handicapped accessible. On the first floor, in addition to the hall, we have a Wycomico County Health Department Commercial Kitchen available for use. Upstairs, on the second floor, we have rooms that, at least eight of them, that will be available to nonprofits to rent at very affordable prices, plus a larger, much larger room that has been looked at by a young lady to open up another dance academy that will offer scholarships to students who would not be... scholarships to students who would not be able to dance otherwise. Right now, we have had performances open to the general public by the Peninsulares and Sweet Adeline Group. The Peninsulares rehearse weekly in the hall. It is available for conferences and dinners. A&E at one point approached us about having a fundraiser, but we hadn't been cleared by the fire chief to have any functions. But we're up and ready to go and we ask you to vote in favor of this expansion. We're excited about things happening downtown and we see Third Friday coming across 50 and are participating in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
George, do you have anything to add?
I can just speak for a second there. George White with Dr. Diane Langler, I'm co-chair of the Langler Memorial Building, which as Mrs. Althouse has indicated to you, is, was formerly known as Fellowship Hall. And Presbyterian Church, for those who are interested in, in history, was one of the first five congregations that were organized by Reverend Francis McHemmy back in 1683, 50 years before Salisbury was founded. And originally established down on the Wycomico River near Upper Ferry, later moved to near Manicoke Road. And prior to the Civil War, part of the present structure was built on Broad Street, 129 Broad Street. And we feel very blessed that we've been able to acquire the former Fellowship Hall, which has now been renamed Langler Memorial Building as an annex of our church. We feel that it'll be a wonderful resource, resource for the ministry of our congregation and hopefully a wonderful venue for the community and for drama and musical events. And it's, as most of you know, is in the expanded area north of US Route 50. And it's, I think, going to hopefully be a real benefit to the continued growth of Salisbury and we hope that that will be, as I say, a venue for, for the community as well as for our church.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. All right, I'd like to invite Tara Gladden to come forward from Salisbury University.
Ditto.
Bravo. And lastly, I'd like to invite Therese Hamilton to come forward.
I'm sorry, I can't say. That's a surprise, I know.
Okay, hi, thank you. I'm Therese Hamilton, Executive Director of the Salisbury Wycomico Arts Council. And Mr. Mayor and Council and family and friends here, what a great opportunity to speak on the arts, what a thought. I want to tell you some interesting facts and then I want to kind of make it simple, at least the way I see it in my mind. First of all, the arts as we know or don't know are an economic and an academic engine and that's not to be taken lightly. That is an amazing thing. While we know the arts are pleasurable and culturally stimulating, the exciting truth is that the arts provide a seven to one return on your investment. National statistics record government spending on the arts and culture at $4 billion, yet $30 billion is created nationally. To connect those economic dots a little further, the arts industry in Maryland employs approximately 15,000 people, creates 340 arts jobs and businesses, and 196 of those are right here in Wycomico County. So nationally, the arts create $166 billion in economic activity. With consumers, this is the really interesting part, consumers spending $9.4 billion on admissions to arts events, which is 2.6 billion more than admission to movies, 1.8 billion more than admission to spectator sports. The arts are an academic and an economic engine. We know that when children are involved in the arts, their grades are higher, their academics are higher, their truancy is down, kids with a tube on their hip don't skip school, doesn't happen, doesn't go together. Their character is built. When people enjoy arts in our community, they stay in hotels, they eat in restaurants and they shop. Okay, so you're going to put money in your pocket and make great leaders for tomorrow. What is not to love? It's, it's really very simple. And the most simplistic view would be this, what happens when you put Kmart and Walmart next to each other? Everybody knows that. If you like to shop, you're going to shop more. You're going to have one-stop shopping, which you do at, get at Walmart, you get a few other things at Walmart, but you also get one-stop shopping. So that's a lot of fun. So what if you increase the arts entertainment district and put more here, more here? So if you love to travel around to find arts or you love to enjoy arts events, and who doesn't like a concert? Who doesn't like an art event? Then you're going to have more. You're going to have more traveling, more tourism. So it's really, really kind of simple in my, in my thinking, that, why, why not? We've seen Third Friday grow to an amazing proportions. We're now, I've been talking with Jamie and we're working on trying to anchor it down at the other end of town, to Poplar Hill and do things on Lot 10. We've got other businesses down there, Mojos has popped up, a little light layup store is down there. But we've seen some other examples. A few years ago, the Salisbury Wycomico Arts Council gave a grant to SU Galleries for a pilot. The pilot was called SU Downtown Gallery. Now that pilot turned into what is here now and what came also, cake art, which may have been there first, but nevertheless, cake art, echelon in the brick room. It's like a little, like a little, what's the word I'm looking for? A click?
Closer.
Okay, okay. So, and then on another note, SWAC grant recipients, we give arts grants to keep these arts going in the community. And some of the places you're talking about enhancing, we are already using and would love to see that be part of the entertainment district. For example, the Chipman Center has a program called Masterpiece. They, they provide their show in the Chipman Center. SWAC has had our annual meeting in the Chipman Center. The Peninsulares, who we fund, have presented in the Langler Memorial Building. And Salisbury Chamber Singers have performed for years in the Presbyterian Church, which we fund, the Chamber Singers. So how, that's already happening on their own, what if they really were marketed? What if that district was presented as an arts and entertainment district, more people would come? There may be people that don't come because they think they're going to a church. What if they were coming to the A&E, to a district where there's going to be promotion and, and so forth? Okay, lastly, I just want to give you a couple of interesting facts that I think are kind of cool, that's the wrong word, but anyway. Okay, in Baltimore, the Harbor Place, when they redid things and revamped and brought in the arts, just without amenities or tourism, when they, the first year they had accomplished that, they attracted more visitors than Disneyland, the very first year. Cities such as Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Charleston, South Carolina, Newark, New Jersey, have used the creation of arts districts as centerpieces in efforts to combat increasing crime and suburban plight and restoring vitality to downtown areas. John Ng, Chairman Emeritus of the BF Goodrich Company, explains, "People who create our company, in our companies, whether they be scientists, marketing experts or business strategists, benefit from exposure to the arts. People cannot create when they work and live in a culturally sterile environment." And as far as cash registers ringing for the Third Friday and enhanced area, Chairman, Ken Ferguson, Chairman, CEO of American Bankers Association says, "As Chairman of the Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce, I visit almost every city and town in the state. There is a visible difference in places with an active cultural community. I see people looking for places to park, stores staying open late and restaurants packed with customers. The business day is extended and cash registers are ringing." And the last really important fact that is, is kind of interesting is that there are more jobs in the arts industry, more employment in our country in the arts industry than there are accountants or auditors, police officers, lawyers, farming, fishing, forestry, telemarketers, commuter programming, postal mail carriers, firefighters and professional athletes. More people are employed in the arts than all those categories together. So that's just a side benefit, there could be more jobs. Okay, that's, that's it. I will wrap up with saying, last year for the first time, the Salisbury Wycomico Arts Council started a new festival and it is on again for this year. We want to see it happen every year. We believe it could become the Spring Fest of Ocean City. We have all the ingredients here and it's River City Arts Jam, this year September 12th on the river. Why should Salisbury be a pass-through to Ocean City? We are a destination. We have river, we have water, we have arts, we have great people. So, you know, there may be some that scoff at us as dreaming for downtown revitalization or say it's the same story on a different day, but the Salisbury Wycomico Arts Council has called the downtown cra- called the Salisbury of 2015 vibrant pulse, Salisbury craze that's trailing ablaze. And we're happy to be a part of that. And with the hard work, ambitions, dreams and generous spirits of all those involved with the A&E, the Third Friday, Remedy Church, the mayor, the council, the businesses, the entrepreneurs, the galleries, the pubs, Rivers Edge, the county library and SWAC and many others, one has to only look around any corner today of downtown and get a lump in your throat for tomorrow. This is good stuff. Everything's going to be all right and we have downtown craze and future gaze bright. Life is coming to the river and the river is coming to life. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, clearly the community is very divided on this issue.
I am so torn.
Obviously. And Therese, I wouldn't dare, I wouldn't dare lawyers to have a larger industry than any other. No, no offense, Mr. Tillman, because they just might create more.
But I do like her theme of come to it, not through it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so I was, I was so excited to hear all of that, that I was, that I cut Mr. Stevenson off. Didn't even let him actually read the resolution. So we're going to do that first and then we'll see if there's any further discussion and then we'll vote on this issue.
May I say first that?
Yes, Mr.
I like the word cool. I can relate.
Cool, cool was okay and Ms. Hamilton got going so quickly that I almost needed a drink of water there for a second. Nicely done. So I'll get us through the nuts and bolts of this. Resolution 2480 simply authorizes the city of Salisbury to apply to the Maryland State Arts Council, Department of the, part of the Department of Business and Economic Development to expand the Arts and Entertainment District. By doing this, we offer the opportunity for an increase in footprint and the benefits would include an income tax subtraction modification for qualifying residents or residing artists, a property tax credit, which is 100% for the first six years, and an exemption from admissions and amusement tax when those events are held in the city of Salisbury. So that's really all I need to do before I could get to you.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Can I just also just take a minute and thank our former Assistant City Administrator, Terrence Arrington, our Business Development Specialist and Mr. Stevenson for all the work that they did in getting all of the nuts and bolts and the paperwork and all of those things submitted to the state of Maryland and also going out and getting all the support from the public, the staff sometimes. That's where the hall is and we do appreciate everything that they do every day, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Kordakowski.
Yes.
Thanks for everything you and the team at A&E did to put this together and Mr. Stevenson as well. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
And you will all be at the county council meeting, right?
Equally exciting.
We need their partnership there, too.
Equally exciting. Next item on our agenda is decoupling the enterprise fund debt from the general fund debt.
Wait, it was, it was conditional, you have to stay.
Don't go anywhere, it's really good stuff.
Close the doors, once you're here.
We like this.
Thank you. Wear a security outcry for this.
Are we going to take a break? It's just two minutes.
Sure.
Yeah, take a break.
All right, we're going to take, we're going to take a two-minute break. We'll recess for two minutes.